Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome everybody out to the Mesa City Council Study Session for February the 8th. We have a very full agenda today, lots of very substantive important things to talk about, so we'll get the ball rolling right away. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on a comprehensive update to the city's sign code with emphasis on permanent signs. Welcome Angelica and John for the second version of this. Thank you.
Mayor, council members could be with you again. We had a good discussion the other day. We hope to have another one this morning. Today, we are, as the mayor said, going to focus on permanent signs, but we'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has on any portion of the sign ordinance. With regard to the permanent signs, there was really less change here, or less impact from the read decision. This was more about responding to some of the community needs and what we've seen with modifications needed to our ordinance in the community. As we have implemented the current sign ordinance and taken numerous comprehensive sign plans to the Board of Adjustment over the years, we've kind of learned some things about how signage needs are changing. We went back and reviewed those comprehensive sign plans to look and see kind of what were some of the consistent things people were looking for, and could we incorporate those into our code so they can become items by right? So some of the things that we will address more specifically today as far as the modifications with the larger commercial center signage packages and what we might allow there, larger buildings, how to address the pad buildings out in front of the commercial centers, and also some modifications for the office with multiple tenants. So just going right in then to the commercial center signage. The existing sign allowances there, up to 12 feet tall, 80 square foot max per sign. Those allowances are calculated based on frontage that a particular development would have, and then from that we get both the area and height allowances for a development.
So under the proposed code, what we have done is we have heard from some of the retailers and commercial centers indicating that they wish to have, to be able to have taller signs. And so we went back, analyzed that, took a look at it, and determined that we could move forward with commercial centers that have more than three tenants and that have more than 400 feet of frontage with an allowance for one sign to be at 14-foot tall, which is two-foot taller than what we currently allow, and to also be, have, provide an increase to the allowable sign area up to 120 square foot for that 14-foot-tall sign. That's a 40-square-foot addition in area to that main center identification signage. And that sign is intended to be a main center identification sign, where the rest of the signs on the property along the street frontages would then be limited to eight feet in height and 50 square feet in area. This would not require a special use permit. This would be an allowance that is just proposed to be written into the code and be allowed by right, and it would only require a sign permit.
Okay, so the last thing you said, Angelica, under the existing code, we have one big 12-foot-tall sign, and we're proposing to increase signage. This is very business-friendly. We're giving people more signage, up to 14 feet and bigger, eight from 80 square feet to 120 square feet. That's very generous. But then the part that confuses me is all other signs. So in addition to this one big monument sign for the big commercial center, there's additional signage that they can have?
Mayor, council members, yes. Under the existing code, developments are allowed to provide multiple freestanding signs if they have the frontage for it. So the way that we calculate their frontage, their allowable sign height and sign area is based on the street frontage of their development. The longer street frontage they have, the more signs they can display, but we do currently have a cap of 12 feet in height and 80 square feet per sign. So the only, what we're proposing is to keep those methods of calculating the height and the area, but we would allow one sign in the center to be taller and bigger. And what we have seen with, that the Board of Adjustment has repeatedly approved for comprehensive sign plans is commercial centers with multiple signs. And a lot of times, it's a give-and-take when we're negotiating those with property owners and developers, and a lot of times, they prefer to have larger attached signs, and they themselves choose to limit their freestanding signs. But in this case, what we're proposing is the one sign would be taller and bigger, and then the others would come down to the eight feet and 50 square feet in area, which is similar to what we have seen in the comprehensive sign plans, except that within those existing comprehensive sign plans, they were going 12 feet in height, 80 square feet.
And so, and under the other sign category, are, what, how are we changing? Is it?
Let me just make, yeah, Angela, by the way, cameo appearance in your, yesterday.
Yes, this is Mesa resident.
Mesa resident.
Thank you for being below the radar.
She might have looked familiar, I just want to clarify.
That's right.
First time I hear it.
You were great, by the way. Thank you.
Anyway, Angela, the, Angelica, the, we're not changing the calculation of the frontage and the total signage. It's kind of the mix of how they want to do it. I think what we're saying is, what we're seeing is some commercial developments would prefer to have one larger sign than multiple.
We're increasing the cap on one sign.
Signs, so mayor, the totality of the amount of signage isn't necessarily changing, it's just how, we're allowing them to put it in one larger sign than before. It was limited, this time they can put it in one larger sign, which would mean, though, they'd have fewer of the individual.
The other monument signs, correct.
Monument signs.
So again, looking at the calculation, it's one square foot, one foot of height for every 20 feet of frontage, so a site with 400 feet of frontage gets then the 40 square, or the 40 feet.
Okay, so again, the kind of a basic question, the amount of signage is basically staying the same.
Correct.
But we're saying, you can put more of it in one basket if you want.
There you go.
Yes.
And if you want to go big, you can go big, and if you do that, that reduces the
amount of other signage that you can have.
Yes.
Okay. So it's, we're just being more flexible to the business community, so I would expect that they would appreciate that.
And based on the experience of applications that we've seen over the last couple of years.
These are typical requests.
It's kind of what we're seeing in trend out there, so.
So another example for the permanent signs, we also have in the current code a limit on the number of signs that you can have on your business. If you're less than 100 feet of frontage, you can have two signs. If you're over 100 feet of frontage, you can have three, and the signs are capped at 160 square feet. Today, we're seeing bigger buildings than we used to back in 1986 when the sign code was originally approved, and so again, we've looked at ways to respond to that in the new code.
So what we're proposing is to address those larger buildings that have typically come in requesting those comprehensive sign plans to be able to increase the cap of the 160 square feet of attached signage. They typically want larger signs because their buildings are set further from the street, and they are bigger, so in order to have the signage be proportional and visible from the street, what we're suggesting is that any building that has between 200 and 249 feet of frontage would be allowed by right four signs. So right now, they're capped at three, so we would be increasing that to be, to allow them to have the four signs, and then each sign would still be capped at 160 square feet of area, but they would be allowed that additional sign. Now, for buildings that are larger than 250 feet of frontage, they would be allowed to have five signs. Now, from there, obviously, there are some buildings that are larger than that, and so for each additional 50 feet of frontage that they have, we would allow them to have an additional sign with a maximum cap of seven signs, and we would also limit the square footage of 160 per sign. So I have an example here at the bottom with the Target in West Mesa, that's at Longmore and Southern, and so they, that building has 495 feet of frontage on Longmore, just to kind of help put it into a concrete example here. So under the proposed code, that building would be allowed to provide seven signs at 396 square feet in area. When we do the calculation of their allowable sign area, it comes out to 396. So when that building was originally developed back in 2003, they came in and received approval for a comprehensive sign plan. They requested four signs on their building, but they also requested 397 square feet in area. And so what we're trying to demonstrate with this example is that the calculations that we're proposing are equivalent to what has been requested previously and approved under the comprehensive sign plans. In this case, this build, this applicant just requested four signs, but under the proposed code, they would be allowed up to seven.
Makes sense. So again, just more flexibility.
Especially these large buildings, you've seen them now, they have multiple, I mean, it's one building, but it's Target and Starbucks and.
Sometimes they have tenants in their better banks and restaurants that they need to be able to advertise as well, so this would meet those needs.
No.
Question I ask, how does this compare to other communities? Is everybody in the process of redoing their sign code, so we're all, it's kind of a fluid thing, and, or have we been talking with one another? Are the developers of these properties going to come in a couple of weeks from now and say, "Well, you guys are way more restrictive than Chandler and Gilbert and Tempe. We could do this, this, and this." Or are we all kind of playing with the same rules?
So mayor, council, our existing code is more restrictive than what meets their needs, but we do have the option within our existing code to allow them to come in and file that application for a special use permit to establish that comprehensive sign plan. What that allows us to do is negotiate a sign package for their building that meets their needs. What we're, what we're proposing here is that we've taken a look at what those approvals have been in the past and adding that directly into the code so that they don't have to come in, file a separate application, go through the public hearing process that can take six weeks or longer. What we're proposing is that they would be allowed to just come in and apply for a sign permit and be able to put the signage on their building by eliminating the requirement for the hearing and the approval of the comprehensive sign plan.
Great. Sounds good to me.
Okay. So the next item that we've looked at and are proposing is to better address the pad buildings that are out in the parking lots of these larger commercial centers. Today, they are limited to two signs if they have less than 100 feet of frontage, or three signs if they have more than 100 feet of the building face. But these are out in the middle of a parking lot, and they're often visible from all four sides, so they're often coming in and asking for that comp sign plan to put signage on that third or fourth side, depending upon how big their building is. And so the new code again proposes to address that by right.
Correct, so they would be allowed to have the four signs. We are limiting the attached sign area to 80 square feet just because they're typically not very large buildings. They are up at the street, but we do feel and believe, based on the analysis we've done of the existing approvals, that this would meet their needs to allow them to provide a sign on each of their elevations without having to have approval of the special use permit.
Then another area that we've looked at are the office buildings. Sometimes these are multiple tenant office buildings, and our signage allowances for those today are really set up thinking it's one tenant in this office building, so it has very limited sign allowance for these multi-tenant type office buildings.
So what we're proposing is to allow each tenant to be able to have their own sign with a maximum area of 32 square feet. The existing code really does limit them to two signs on the building, and so what a lot of these office developers and tenants are having to do is come in and request a comprehensive sign plan. They have to file that application, go through the hearing process to get that approval. And we understand that the needs have changed because a lot of these office buildings are occupied by multiple tenants, and so to address that, we want to add that into the code just to allow them each to have their own sign.
Multi-residence developments currently have allowance of 32 square feet of sign area, eight square feet, or eight feet of height, two signs per frontage. We really haven't proposed much change here.
Other than adding in some of the other zoning districts that are downtown and that are allowed under the Form-based Code, such as the DR2, DR3, the T4N, T4NF, T5N, so these are all Form-based Code and downtown zoning districts that are currently have even more of restricted allowances for signage, and so what we're proposing to do is to, because these districts allow for the multi-residence developments, is to allow them signage that's equal to what we allow other multi-residence districts.
Okay, so that does prompt a question, because as you know, we currently have pending a lot of housing, a lot of multifamily up and down the light rail corridor, and that is a different type of housing than we've approved in the past. It's a more urban housing, it's transit-oriented, and it seems like in a downtown environment, you might want a different set of criteria for residential signs than you do in a, on an arterial street somewhere. So I assume that was the rationale behind the previous restrictions on these other zoning codes that we've now said, regardless of where you live, if you're in a multifamily complex, here's the sign package.
Mayor, council, what our code provides are maximums, and so those would be the outer limits. These developments would still be coming in and applying for a bill, a sign permit for those sign packages for their developments, so they would still be reviewed by staff.
So to me, like I said, with this new type of housing coming online, it seems like now's the time to actually start differentiating between, you know, not having a one-size-fits-all sign package for multifamily. So it seems curious to me that now's the time where we decide to go in reverse on that.
Mayor, another way to look at it too, if you look at the zones that are listed here, particularly we talked about downtown and the transit, transact zones in the Form-based Code, these don't get to the most intense zones, the T4 Main Street, T5 Main Street, T6 Main Street. And when we, when you look at the details of the sign packages or sign allowances for the downtown zones, we're not covering those in much detail here today, we do get into much more fine-grained allowances than we do elsewhere because of the different, comes back to that whole pedestrian district allowances that we have in the, in that core area. And so we do really look at the opportunity to use signage to help create that sense of place and identity to, in these more urban pedestrian-type areas.
And mayor, we did take a look at where these districts exist and where the T4N and the T4NF and the T5N are, would be allowed, and they're not, it's not along Main Street, it's not along the, along that downtown core, it's more along the perimeter of the downtown area where these districts exist.
So to simplify it for me then again, so the pending light rail corridor housing projects that are coming online, they're not included in these exemptions. They would have a different code that would allow for more urban housing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Then when we get on, down into the single-family residential lots, today we have an allowance for one sign, six square feet, six feet tall. It's limited in its use. It's for the name, address, occupant, L C of a building. That gets into regulating the content of the sign, which you can't do anymore, so we had to come back and adjust this a little bit.
So what we're proposing is to still allow one non-illuminated sign per lot, but it would be limited to a maximum of four square feet, and if it happens to be attached to the building, it would be limited to 10 feet in height. If it's a freestanding sign, it would be limited to four feet in height. But again, no longer limiting what the sign copy would be.
So traditionally, the sign copy has been the number of my house.
It's, 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 mayor, it's different, it's not the address, that is exempt from these regulations, but some people might at times want to do something a little bit more than that on their house, put their name or whatever.
Now, they would have.
Control that.
An option to put up a sign that says "Save the Whales" if they chose to do so.
Okay. Good to know.
Subdivision entry signs are also currently regulated at one 12-foot, 12-square-foot sign per entry.
We have noticed that these developments are requiring more signage. They really do want to be able to create a sense of community and have the entry identification for their developments, so we are loosening that up a little and proposing that they be allowed to have two signs at two entrances that are 20 square foot each. So it's really in response to meet their needs.
Electronic message panels, today, the electronic message panels have regulations on how the sign message can change. We don't allow full motion animation. We're keeping that. The current regulations allow the sign to change that message once per hour to have anything different. They go to the Board of Adjustment for modification to that. Board of Adjustment has fairly routinely been approving changes down to every 15 seconds. Currently, it takes a special use permit for these types of signs in the downtown area.
So what we're proposing is to allow those message changes to occur once every eight seconds, and this does comply with national safety standards, so we did take a look at that. It is also a similar requirement to what the city of Tempe currently has. We are also proposing that they provide reduced lighting levels from dusk to dawn, and that also there be no illumination from 11:00 PM to sunrise when the sign is located within 150 feet of residential unless that sign is blocked by an intervening building. So we have noticed and had, have heard some comments regarding the illumination and the glare that some of those signs can provide, and so as a response to that, we are adding some of these restrictions, but these restrictions would not apply in the downtown pedestrian area.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but let's use the, the sign that you have, for an example, the mobile car wash sign. Let's say I live next door to that sign. At 11 o'clock, what part of that sign turns off? The entire thing or just the part of it that is a changing message?
So mayor, council members, the entire sign would need to have a reduced lighting level after dusk, just because we don't require as much illumination at night to be able to have it be seen. So it's one, it would help conserve energy, but also you really don't need that much illumination at that time. Now, if that sign is within 150 feet of your home, then the portion of it that has the electronic message panel would be the portion that would need to have no illumination after 11:00 PM.
So that's the all-milk, two gallons, $5, that message would go dark, but would the, the price of the unleaded versus regular, would that stay illuminated?
Mayor.
Is that a message sign or is that a?
Yeah, those are electronic message panels.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we would, and obviously, it wasn't our intent to require that those completely come off, so it's something that we would need to take a look at it, but the reduced lighting level from dusk to dawn would be appropriate in this case.
Okay, so it's a little ambiguous as to whether or not the price of the gas would have to come down, but presumably it would because it's a changeable message, right?
Mayor, that's an, yeah, excellent question and excellent observation, observation, so we'll go back and take a look at that and ensure that it doesn't require that those come off at night.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
The reduced lighting level, how do you measure, what, is that based on lumens or like, are you actually going to go out and measure the amount of lumens that the lights are producing?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, yes, there is a specific illumination levels that are proposed in the code, and the way that we've written the code is to allow a specific level or equivalent, so it depends on the type of light source that they use as to what the specific lighting levels are. But we have taken a look at some studies that were done by the International Sign Association and are proposing the lighting levels that are recommended by some of the studies that they have done.
And the other question I have is, it says 150 feet from residential area. I'm assuming that if there was a residential property directly behind the business where they wouldn't have visual access to the lights anyways, that that's not part of this, right?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, yes. If, we would consider that situation to be, to have an intervening building between the sign and the home, therefore, that requirement would not apply.
Got it. Thank you.
Another interesting challenge we had in this was flags. Today, the ordinance regulates flags, or basically doesn't regulate flags if they are for a nation-state, country, religious organization. Well, that's reading the sign copy to determine if it can be allowed or not. We can't do that anymore, so we had to come up with an alternate way to regulate flags to make sure that they, they weren't too prolific.
So what we're proposing is that we allow no more than three flagpoles per lot or parcel, and also allow no more than two flags per pole. The height of the poles, of the flagpoles are already restricted under the zoning code. We're not proposing any changes to that requirement.
Chris.
Quick question. Have we had a lot of problems with flagpoles on properties?
Mayor, council member Glover, we have not.
Then forgive me, but I think this is a solution in search of a problem, and so I don't know why we're regulating it.
Yes, mayor, council member Glover, the reason we haven't had a problem is because the only things that were exempt were the flags, or the flags for the nation's state and so forth, and so all others were not allowed, so nobody put them up. The concern is if we take away any regulation, that we will see individual businesses using that as an opportunity then to start putting their business flags up on the poles, which again, previously wasn't allowed.
So there wasn't existing regulation before, so it wouldn't stop them from doing this?
Mayor, council member Glover, the regulation in the past said that was able to indicate a flag is a flag. What we typically consider a flag to be from a nation or a state, but under the changes that are required to the code to comply with read, we're no longer able to determine that that is a, what we all typically consider a national flag or a state flag. A business would be allowed to fly a flag that they determined to be a flag, and we have no control or no restrictions on what that messages on that flag. So the example that I have here on the slide at the bottom right, that is a Kentucky Fried Chicken flag. And so the issue that we're trying to address is that we don't end up seeing businesses that have more than three flagpoles and then are flying commercial signage on each of those flags as opposed to a nation-state or those types of flags.
Are there businesses that currently have more than three flagpoles?
Mayor, council member Glover, we looked at several examples where we have seen multiple flagpoles on sites, and all of the examples we found in Mesa have three flagpoles.
Okay, again, I still think this is a solution in search of a problem and not something we should need to go further into.
Okay.
So just to clarify, so the picture on the far right is.
prohibited under the current proposal.
That is correct.
And so we would never.
It's prohibited under today's.
Sorry, under today's.
But will be allowed under the new code.
But potentially, possibly, because regardless of content, any commercial entity could put this flag up going forward.
Correct.
What, so today, we haven't had this problem because it's limited to the nation-state flags. So that's, it's not been an issue.
Correct.
And just going forward, I mean, the concern is that now the commercial, because we can't look at content.
Correct.
They could start putting these flags up.
Correct.
So under the new code, we could have three Kentucky Fried Chicken poles in front of a Kentucky Fried Chicken with running.
Two flags each.
Yeah. Which, hey, you know, like I say, we're not, we don't regulate what flag you fly anymore, right? Because the Supreme Court told us we can't do that. And I get Chris's point, but I, people are very creative, and one person's flagpole is another person's banner. And I mean, right now, we do regulate and have an issue with all these temporary banners that get put up in front of businesses. And if I'm, it seems like if I'm, if I own a Kentucky Fried Chicken, I'd love to have 20 Kentucky Fried Chicken banners in front of my restaurant, and I could call them flagpoles. I don't know, it seems like there's some, there's opportunity for some creativity and potential abuse.
Correct, mayor. That is exactly what we're trying to address.
Okay. Thank you.
Freeway landmark monument signs, again, we need to look at those. Were too many changes we had here. Currently, they're regulated based on our previous general plan and those land use designations, so it's no longer apply, so we had to address that. We also have a number of the, some of the regulations within our development guidelines, so we looked at balancing those out. Currently, the size limit is in the guidelines, and still a little bit of Angelica's proposal to move those over to the ordinance itself.
So because as John said, the regulations were written at a time when we had a different general plan, what we're proposing with this change is to align it with the current general plan that was approved by the voters in 2014. And so what we're proposing is that the freeway landmark monument signs would be allowed in the mixed-use activity district, but also adding zoning districts under which it would, they would also be allowed, and that's the LCGC, PEP, LIGI, PC, and the ID2 districts. We're also adding into the code some of those development standards that are in the guidelines just because we are doing an update, and so that is one requirement that we felt was appropriate to come in as a regulation under the sign code. So what we're adding is, is the one square foot of sign area allowed for each two linear feet of freeway frontage with the maximum cap at the 750 square feet, which is existing within the guidelines already. It's just adding it into the code.
The, the guidelines as they exist do have some references to things that are content-based. So as we finalize the sign ordinance itself and bring that back to council, we'll also be bringing back revised set of freeway landmark guidelines to remove those content issues that are in there.
Mr. Thompson.
John, is there going to be on the freeway landmark monument signs? I know that Gilbert had an issue with a car dealership on the 202 sand tan that lit up people's backyards across, across the freeway. Are we going to have any type of illumination requirements on those as well? So if they're overly bright and they're near a residential or multifamily facility, they'll dim them?
Yeah, mayor, council member Thompson, the elimination items we mentioned before with the changeable message signs really apply also to the freeway signs. Murals has been another.
I'm sorry. I have one question. So like, you have the Dana Park sign as an example here, so I'm assuming that that sign would fit within the proposed guidelines, that would still be an okay sign.
Mayor, yes.
And I know that they had recently requested that an additional sign be placed. Would that one qualify under that, or would that be too much square footage of signs?
Mayor, council member Whitaker, we have looked briefly at what they are proposing because I guess, sure answer is yes, it could be allowed.
Okay. I was just trying to wrap my head around how big the signs. I was just trying to wrap my head around how big the signs are actually.
Because most of the regulations are in guidelines and not ordinance, they can be modified a little bit easier to apply to a specific situation.
Okay, thanks.
This is kind of a, in the past, this has been a controversial topic, and so I'm just trying to, I'm not seeing much of a change between the existing and proposed policy here. Is, am I missing something?
No, that's correct. Now, we're ready for murals? Okay, so again, murals was another interesting issue for us to try to address. Currently, they're only allowed in the downtown area, and they are required to go before the Design Review Board for their review to determine if they are signage or not, if they're art, or if they fit the building. So again, that gets at least somewhat into looking at the content to make that determination.
So what we're proposing is to allow murals in all zoning districts and only regulate the sign copy if there happens to be sign copy on the mural, when the sign copy is over two inches tall, and if it's readable beyond the lot boundary, or within 50 feet, whichever is more. And that sign copy would then be counted towards the allowable sign area.
So when a mural becomes a sign, essentially.
Correct.
And it would be the.
Or that portion of it.
Portion of the mural only.
So if the shark was wearing a surf and ski banner on his T-shirt, we would regulate it, but if he doesn't, then it's art, it's a mural.
Mayor, we would regulate the sign copy within that portion of it, not the entire shark.
Makes sense, all right.
Statues, sculptures, and 3D objects. So we see these with some businesses, have used them over time, and you can see some examples there on the screen. Currently, they require a special use permit and count towards the allowed sign area when they're getting determined to be part of the signage and not just art.
We do think they are very interesting, and we do want to find ways to help encourage them. So what we're proposing is to allow these statues, sculptures, or 3D figures within the multifamily, the commercial, and the industrial zoning districts with the special use permit, but we would propose that only 50% of the area be counted towards the allowable sign area.
Okay, so just to put that into English again, if I have a Bob's Big Boy statue, I take that square footage and I cut it in half and I apply that to my signage allocation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just the part of the advertisement, not the entire sculpture?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, in this case, it is half of the area of the sculpture.
So the entire big boy, not just the part of his, not just the.
Correct, but what I should also add is that.
Just half the big boy.
We would only count half the big boy when it's within 15 feet of the building and 100 feet from the right-of-way. If these statues or sculptures or 3D figures are really farther away from the street, then we're not going to count them at all. It's only when they're up.
In the right-of-way.
Closer towards the entrance, but not, they would not be allowed in the right-of-way. They would have to be on the private property itself, but when they're placed close to the entry of the building, if it's closer towards the street and they really are intending to be more of a sign calling the attention of drivers and people coming onto the site, then that's when we would count 50% of the area. Otherwise, if they're located in an internal courtyard or, you know, anywhere where it's more than 100 feet from the right-of-way, then we would not count that area at all.
Quick question. How would we enforce this? Is it complaint-driven? Is it you drive by and you see it, and so then you want to go and issue a complaint? How do we enforce it?
Mayor, Councilmember Glover, so what we typically find is applicants, when they're developing their sign package, they'll come in and talk to staff in the planning office about their proposed sign packages. And that's when, a lot of times, we were going back and taking a look at whether or not they would benefit from a comprehensive sign plan, and that's when all of that is discussed and talked about. But with the way that we're moving forward, it would allow them more flexibility so that they don't have to eat up all of their allowable sign area with one of these statues.
All of these are just generalizations, right? Like, the business can always come in and apply for an exception, and it can be approved.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, that's correct. We're still leaving within the code the option for the special use permit for the comp sign plan.
We're just trying to take the code today with these revisions, maybe lessons learned over the last several years, so.
Good way of putting it.
So another issue that we had to look at were the drive-through signs, the message panels that go with the fast food restaurants as you make an order. And so they're called downtown menu boards in the downtown area, 45 square feet, eight feet tall. No permit required outside of the downtown area if it's not readable from the street is the current regulation.
So what we're proposing is that these menu board signs would be allowed to be 32 square feet in area and eight feet in height. They would also need to be located within five feet of a drive-through and have the sign copy only be legible from the occupant of a vehicle in that drive-through lane. The idea with that is that they're not really intended to be signs that are readable from the street. It's really to help ensure that they really are the drive-through signs, and we would not be counting this sign area against their allowable signage.
Mr. Thompson.
Angelica or John, with, is there an industry standard on the drive-through signs? In other words, you know, is the, is the dimensions and the size of a McDonald's drive-through sign the exact same as Wendy's or Burger King, or is there an industry standard?
Councilmember Thompson, I drove around several of these drive-through locations, and I did not notice that there is a standard. They really do vary in size depending on the specific establishment.
Is there, is there, all right, is there a national sign code that dictates these sizes, or, I mean, what I'm getting at, is this something that we're just making up numbers and sizes that's going to impact businesses and put more burden on the businesses when they have to pay for a sign because it's not within that standard realm of what they're trying to build?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, as Angelica said, as we have looked at it, we've seen a wide variety in these, but from what we've seen also, we feel like the vast majority fit within these parameters, and so they have the flexibility to still do the type of signs that they do today. But also, as we're going over this next month or two of seeking input, if we hear any concerns or pushbacks, we will address that. And the final piece is, a little part of the feedback that comes from the REED decision is not changing the sizes based on the type of sign it is, and we've adopted this 32-square-foot size as kind of a standard for a lot of different types of signs.
But Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, just to add to what John said, if there was a business, specific business, that had a very large menu and they needed a larger menu board, it is something that we could still consider under a comprehensive sign plan.
Question, is there a grandfather clause for all the existing, on all this stuff that we've been discussing?
Driveway signs. So many businesses, larger centers will have those entry-exit type signs directing you, once you turn in, which way to go, how to get to the drive-through, those types of things. Today, we regulate the message on that sign to be limited to those kind of directional things, and you can't put any of your advertising message on there. You can't put your logos on those signs to keep them from counting towards your sign allocations. But again, we can't regulate that message with the new ordinance, so.
For the proposed code, we would keep the area the same and the height the same, the three square feet, three foot tall, but we would require that they be located within five feet of a driveway or drive aisle and 20 feet away from the street, and we would not be counting any of this sign area against their allowable signage.
So because we can't regulate the content, everybody's entitled to have a sign with these parameters at the entrance to their business, and it doesn't have to say "drive-through", it could say "have a nice day" or "welcome to McDonald's" or whatever.
Mayor, yes, we would certainly hope that they would use it for directional type of what we consider directional copy, but correct, we cannot regulate what they put on there.
Interesting.
Window signs. Currently, the zoning ordinance limits window signs in the downtown area to 30% of the windows, but we have no restriction on anything outside the downtown area. So as you can see in some of the pictures in areas of Mesa, we do have businesses that completely cover their windows with signage.
So what we're proposing under the new code is to keep the same limitation downtown, to limit the signage to 30% of those windows, but then elsewhere in the city, because we're going from no regulation, what we're kind of proposing is to kind of go in between. And that if a business decides to cover up to half of their windows with signage, that would be permitted. If they decide to provide signage on more than 50% of that window, we would then count that area against their allowable signage. That's one way that we're hoping to discourage all of those window signs being placed over all of the windows, because if they're choosing to go with window signage, they would then need to limit their signage on the building further in order to account for that area. But in doing some research, we have taken a look at what Chandler, Gilbert, Scottsdale, and Tempe allow, and they do limit their window signs to 25%. We wanted to make you aware of that and let you know that what we were proposing was a step towards starting to regulate it, but not going as far as what the other cities are currently requiring.
Mr. Thompson, then Mr. Luna.
I'm just curious, from a PD perspective, from public safety perspective, what is it that PD is looking for? You know, because if there's something going on in a convenience store or whatever, they don't want, they may not want 50% of the windows covered, they may want something less. So I'm kind of curious as to, if you guys have worked with PD on, and/or fire even, on what their take is on this to accommodate their needs as well?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we are certainly aware of the concerns that PD has had about the visibility into these businesses as part of our reasoning for wanting to start putting some regulation. We did not discuss these specific numbers with them, though.
But we can come back with that. I know that their, the SEP Ted efforts, I know that they've talked about, this is one of those better practices, is not to have so much covered up. But let's bring that back. Again, today, it's unlimited. So we were trying to at least step in the right direction, but if, we can, let us bring the, get the comments from public safety, and then we can, the council can decide how far you want to go with this.
Because I know that PD's done a tremendous job of trying to get out with, work with the businesses and so forth, and I don't want to, I don't want to set them back on what they're, what they're out there doing.
Well, yeah, we're, but we're already at unlimited, so we can't, I don't know much more. Now it's just a matter, we're actually moving closer to the direction of not covering up as much.
Didn't we hit, in our recent past, have some disagreements with some of the large.
Downtown, I think.
Well, Circle K.
Being a source.
And if we don't regulate, what was, did we do away with the, with that requirement? Is that because right now we don't regulate it? Is that, or how, can you just remind me what that controversy was, and is that still a controversy?
Mr. Butler knows that answer.
Yeah.
Mayor, Council, Circle K did go to the state legislature and tried to run legislation that would have preempted our SEP Ted recommendations for window covering at convenience stores. Luckily, we were successful in turning back that challenge at the legislature, but we did have some stores, the Quick Trips and others, who had been very compliant and were willing to work with us. It was that particular store who, who used a lobbyist to try to run legislation.
So the SEP Ted, is that just a recommendation that people can choose to follow or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of a consulting opportunity we get from the police department to work with businesses and how they can, you know, use different environmental design to help prevent criminal activity.
But they're not compelled to do.
No, it's, it's a service. And we, yeah.
All right.
Mayor and council members, and this is something that, this is the staff proposal, but obviously we are looking for any feedback and comments that you might have on this topic.
Mr. Thompson, then Mr. Luna.
Going back to the, to the freeway landmark signs, as we're sitting here, I was thinking through the illumination, and, you know, the 150 feet may not be, be enough for, for the freeway monument signs, especially if you have an overly bright sign like what Gilbert was dealing with, because the people were on the, on the other side of the freeway, and $8 right-of-way is what, about 400 to 800 feet at least. I mean, there's usually 400 feet on each side plus the width of the freeway itself, so, you know, it could, could be, I mean, you'd have to look at what the 202 sand tan is, what their width is, but something of that nature, I think, would, you know, if you have a subdivision or multifamily housing within that many feet of a residential, we probably ought to look at dimming requirements on that.
Yeah, and I think, but I think that does already apply today.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we are proposing that all signage between dusk to dawn reduce their lighting levels.
But it said only within 150 feet of residential, right?
That, no, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I should clarify that that requirement, where they have to shut off their illumination is only when they're adjacent to residential, but the reduced lighting level from dusk to dawn would apply to all signage.
Okay, perfect.
All new signage.
Mr. Luna.
Angelica, thank you for the presentation. I know you're closing it. So nonprofits, public buildings, and churches are exempt from this? Or do they, do they have to comply as well? You treat them like a business, or how does that work?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, yeah, all, all of those businesses that you named are required to comply with the sign code.
Nonprofits, Child's Crisis Center, for example, and A New Leaf.
Yes.
So they all have to follow, adhere to this?
Yes.
And churches?
Yes.
There's no exemption for churches, okay?
And public schools.
Public schools would not be required to comply with our sign code.
Because they're separate governmental entity.
And charters as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Charters are required.
I think they are required?
No, no, because they're exempt from the zoning ordinance also.
Jeremy, my question on the window covering topic that we were talking about earlier, does that apply to window tint, or like, on these examples, when we talk about it from a public safety perspective? Does that mean we would be regulating window tint if it was 100%? Or there would have to be, have to be some form of a sign in order for that to count?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we currently do not regulate window tint on windows.
Okay.
Of the building, other than through the design review process. We would encourage building owners to not have reflective surfaces on there.
But going back to the topic of public safety, unless I'm not interpreting that correctly, is the issue is that public safety has, is that they're not able to see into the building because the signs are covering 100% of the window space or something to that extent, right? So.
Correct. There is a concern with that.
Okay.
For safety reasons, but I guess the way that the existing code looked at that is there was no regulation on those window signs. Businesses that do have windows, obviously, we would prefer to be able to see into the business in case there is a situation happening where police has to respond or just for the safety of the occupants of that building. But it would be no different than if there was a building that really was very limited on the number of windows that they had, or had very high windows on their building, where there could be a wall there.
Sure. No, I just want to make sure we don't get to the point where we have our police officers going out and measuring window tint on commercial buildings and saying, you know, rip this off or it has to be like, I don't think that we should be getting to that level, but it sounds like that's not going to be a problem.
Mr. Freeman.
Thanks. Angelica, I just, I have one question on the window sign allowance. You know, sometimes advertising changes on the buildings, and, and so I guess I'm asking is, if a business has signage up there with this window sign allowance, then if they change it out, do they lose their grandfathering rights at that point? Because, you know, advertising changes, so I'm just asking that question.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, right, as businesses decide to upgrade their signage or replace their signage, that's when they would be required to comply with the new code.
And I'm kind of with, I'm with Kevin here a little bit. I would support a lower percentage of the window being covered, just, I, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Do they have to, for the window sign, do they have to submit something for every time they change the window signs?
Mayor, Councilmember, yeah, no, they are, do not, they're not required to obtain a sign permit or any type of.
They can change it at any time.
That's correct.
Thank you. Does that conclude? Oh, well, the timeline is my next question, so thank you.
I have one last thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with Mark and whoever else. I think that 25% for the other East Valley cities, if that's where.
Do you like us to move in that direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, this is a reason to slow step.
No, it's good. Good feedback.
Yeah, and I'm still a little vague on the whole SEP Ted thing. I mean, why, if it's totally voluntary, then I wonder why.
Mayor, there is a program, and we just, we need to go back and clarify, there are times when I, and I can't remember what, it's kind of bad behavior of a convenience store, if there's a lot of, I forgot the threshold of calls to that establishment, then they're required to have a SEP Ted review. So first of all, first, SEP Ted is a service at the beginning for businesses to have a review done by someone from the police department, but then it also becomes a. review done by someone from the police department, but then it also becomes a, a, a response to a convenience store that has had, I can't remember what the threshold is, I don't know if anybody remembers, so many calls that exceed a certain limit, then they're required to have a SEP Ted review and comply with it. And I think I'm getting that right. I don't know what the number is, though, John. Do you remember what the frequency is?
Mayor, Council, at one point, we looked at the convenience stores and we really took our top 10%, or our top violators. And it wasn't a set number, but we looked at where the break was, and we worked very hard with them to come up with ways to make it safer in the stores. So if they wanted a lot of these window decals and things like that, they needed cameras and other modes to protect the people inside and officers who were coming to address calls. So we worked for a very long time on these standards with the convenience stores to create a safety, which I, as Scott Butler mentioned, QT was a great partner in that and really helped us to set a very positive standard in the city of Mesa. So we haven't run into too many of the store sign problems since then, and whenever we have issues within convenience stores, we have some very good people within our department that go out and talk to them about ways they can make it safer. So the decals are one aspect of it, but there are many other things that go into it, including, you know, some stores stock their, stack their stock up against the windows. And that's just as effective as a decal of making it so we can't see through it. So there are a lot of different things that can block access and view that we work with them to make the, the places that our citizens go and their people work safer.
So we're not proposing any changes to SEP Ted or what would trigger SEP Ted? So if I have a liquor store that I've had crime issues with in the past and it's triggered the SEP Ted requirements so that I can no longer totally blackout my windows so that...
Or maybe landscaping.
Or landscaping.
Yeah.
So that's all staying the same.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we have, that's a whole different code.
Right. And so Mayor, while we think this proposed regulation would be helpful with regard to the SEP Ted issues and those crime prevention issues, there are other reasons for it. General attractiveness of the buildings and, and views along streets, the signage is often small and hard, hard to read, and so that causes a distraction to a motorist who's driving by or moving through the parking lot trying to look at, see the sign and those types of things. So there are several reasons for, we believe, moving forward with some type of regulation.
But moving in this direction where council seems to be going will help significantly.
Yeah, I think from a, I, I share the, the opinion that's been expressed that if, I hate to see our police officers walking in blind to a potential dangerous situation. And it does seem, just for public safety, it'd be, it is a little creepy to be walking into a building that you can't see, you know, anything through the windows. So I, I'd like to echo that. Mr. Freeman?
Hey, I want to run something up the flagpole.
No more than three of them.
I didn't see it defined in here. Do the flags, do they count for, towards the signage for the property at all? The total square foot of the, of the flag on the pole, does that, is that totally separate? Two separate things?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that sign area would be separate.
Okay. And then just for the record, Mayor, and council members, I visited with a couple of developers in D1, Kobe and Glenwood, and I'd sent this out early to them, and their feedback was they were fine with the current allowances. So what we tweak will probably be good with them as well. So thank you.
Thank you. So just same timeline we had before, but I know John wanted to provide an update on a couple of the comments that were made from last week.
Mayor and council, last week, when we discussed the temporary signs, there were some questions about the balloons, the air-activated signs, and some of the feather banners, and how we compare with some of the other Valley communities. Done some quick research on that, and I'll just touch these quickly and then we can give this to you in hard copy to see. But Tempe, they do allow those items, the banners, balloons activated on a temporary basis. New businesses may use them for up to 30 days, and then after that, any businesses may do a maximum of 21 days in a six-month period of time. So they, they can be used there for limited periods. In Gilbert, they do allow both attached and detached banners. Balloons are allowed only in conjunction with an approved temporary use, and the air-activated is not permitted at all. And Chandler allows the various banners for limited periods, 30 days in a six-month period. Balloons are not allowed. Air-activated graphics are allowed two per premises, and again, cumulative 30 days in a six-month period is all they can be used. Scottsdale allows attached banners only, so none of the detached feather banners, and they do not allow any balloons, animated signs, feather banners, or activated graphics at all.
So we'll give that to you, then we can have a discussion as this moves along.
So it looks like we're being very proactive, and you're actually soliciting, having a developer's advisory forum, all the folks that are going to complain about this, you're inviting them to come in and, and you're, that's happening on the 28th, so I'm sure you'll hear, get some comments there, won't you?
Yes, and then on the 20th of February, February, we are holding a general public meeting at the fire station 201 at 360 East First Street from 6:30 to 7:30 as well. So we invite anybody in the public that is interested to join us there.
Great. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Any more questions?
Well, we have an email address they can send comments to.
Yes, that is correct. And we also have an email address where they can send any comments, and it's signinfo@mesaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So this will be coming back to us for adoption after all...
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go through the public processes and get the input and bring back the, what we hear from them.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is 1B, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on a status update and staff responses on the Imagine Mesa Advisory Committee recommendations. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you.
So Mayor and council, we have several people up here because there's a lot of different topics, but Polly Bonnet is here, she's in the executive manager program right now, rotation here from the library, and so she'll be, has been working on helping the departments come up with the responses, so she'll lead off the discussion. After her presentation, we'll just go through the slides. We actually have some specific presentations to give you a little bit more detail on some of these responses from the departments that we wanted to specifically cover, and I think the three gentlemen that are up here right now have some specific kind of, I guess, elaboration on some of the responses. And then we'll open it up and council can obviously ask us about any of the responses, and we have other department heads here, including Mark Hirschberg, to answer those questions. So anyway, we'll turn it over to Polly.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and council. My name is Polly Bonnet, and I am in the executive manager rotation in the city manager's office. And as Mr. Brady said, I am typically in the library as the branch coordinator of the Red Mountain Branch. And I do have some guests here with me today. Our Jay Zeder, our transportation director, Scott Boucher, our environmental management sustainability director, and Eloy Garza, our code administrator. And I'm here to report back staff responses to the Imagine Mesa campaign. Just an overview about Imagine Mesa for those who may be unfamiliar. Imagine Mesa was a digital campaign effort to gain or generate ideas and gain insight into community priorities and ideas that are intended to help shape Mesa's future. We had 465 ideas that were submitted during the campaign, which launched, launched, excuse me, on June 29th and ended on October 31st. And the committee, we had a 15-member citizen advisory committee that did come back to council on December 7th to present those recommendations, and they fell into four categories: play, home, green future, and work and innovation. So I'll go through each of the recommendation slides that you have seen before, and then the staff responses to each of those items. For Imagine Mesa Play, really the theme surrounded expansion and amenities. Expansion of our trail system, of our parks, of our sports fields, and then amenities included in each of those areas. So amenities along the trails, and then amenities within the parks. And those included shade structures, dog parks, and things like splash pads. So the responses to these ideas, they really are large-scale projects, and they will be brought forth during our capital improvement program project discussions. However, there are a few things being done in the near term to address some of the recommendations, such as transportation, we'll be looking at wayfinding signage to install along the trail system to point users in the direction of retail activity, and then continuing to look at complementary trail usage and ways to develop along those pathways. For Imagine Mesa at Home, these really revolved around neighborhood ideas of proactive code enforcement and addressing noncompliant signs, our feral cat population, and an increase in the number of police officers. And really, a lot of the recommendations regarding that third piece was community action networks and community policing. For Imagine Mesa at Home, the responses, as I mentioned, Eloy Garza is here with us today, and he can expand a little bit further on the first item, which is proactive code enforcement and ideas that his staff and team are working on. And for the second, we have community services who are looking to expand their current program of trap neutering release and, and expand their partnerships as well. And the third, public safety is evaluating their current service demand models to anticipate future needs and evaluate their current staffing. For Imagine Mesa's Green Future, we had public transportation recommendations along with some innovative sustainability projects and expansion of current services. And Scott will expand on those a little bit later in the presentation. However, for the first recommendation, our transit department will be bringing back a strategy for adding a north-south bus route east of Gilbert Road during budget presentations in the coming months. And the spirit of Imagine Mesa really was idea generation and collaboration, which kind of frames this last category of work and innovation. The recommendations that came forth surrounded an innovative spirit, so the Innovation District, the Restaurant Innovation District, and STEAM, STEAM Element, and Code Academy in East Mesa. So very timely, we had an announcement on Tuesday at the mayor's State of the City that cahoots will be coming to downtown Mesa as part of the grid development, and that's one way that, a very important way that we are continuing to grow Mesa's Innovation District, and we'll look for other opportunities to do that. For the STEAM component and Code Academy, the Mesa Public Library is looking to brand and expand our current code offerings, and also offer classes across an, an age range, so we can highlight different coding options in the community that are free and raise awareness. And for the third response to the recommendation, we are creating an environment that supports new restaurants. There is a program in place called the Small Business Attraction Utility Rate, and our downtown transformation manager can speak more to that if you have questions. Along with the four categories that the committee brought forward in December, they did want to highlight existing projects that the city is working on. Did you have a question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman, do you have a question?
I do. Is this a good time to ask a question?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
All right. So on the, let's see, which, Imagine Mesa's Green Future, number three, and I talked to Scott about this, expand bulk of pickup days, large metal cleanup bins. What's your expectations with that, Scott? I mean, for future rollout? I know it's very popular with the neighborhood cleanups. And then the bulk pickups, what do you need? And could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yes, Mayor, Council, good morning. So the plan with the, both the Clean Sweep, Green Sweep program and our bulk pickup is to market, market them a little bit more. So with the Clean Sweep, Green Sweep program, we really are looking at kind of a rebranding of it into a neighborhood cleanup program. Currently, it is, it is used by our residents. We have put some, so over the years, there's been some changes with the programs where we have put some restrictions over the last couple of years of the number of roll-offs you can have per the number of homes that it's servicing. Because what we were seeing, instead of it being a neighborhood cleanup program, it was kind of turning into me and my neighbor cleanup program, where it was just the street that was involved, and you were getting multiple roll-offs for...
Hostage.
...limited amount of houses. And so we've put some restrictions on that. With that, we see that there's maybe a little bit more room for more halls that we can get for those neighborhoods. And so we're going to be marketing that program. In addition to that, we do have a bulk pickup service that is a pay service. It's $22.59. The, the mayor has put it on his Facebook page even, as far as the, the bulk pickup program. And what we're looking at currently, that's a twice-a-week service, so you can schedule it on Mondays or Tuesdays. It's a very popular service that I was asking staff yesterday, so if you called yesterday, we would have you about two weeks out for that pickup. So what we're looking at doing as part of a pilot is to expand that program to four days a week, so it would be offered Monday through Thursday. We're working on how we will zone out the city to make it as efficient as possible, and then marketing that program more also, to see if we have that demand during this pilot, to see if we can sustain a four-day-a-week pickup program with that, that pay service. And so what we're, what we're looking at doing is kind of rebranding both of those programs, marketing them a little bit more, and increasing the service more on that bulk pickup side with the, the $22 fee to it. Because what we find is there is a lot of residents who will have, their, their bulk pickup just kind of happens. They get a new dishwasher, or they're doing, you know, some sort of project, and now they have something that they want to get rid of. They really don't want to have to wait two weeks in order to get rid of that, but it's not something where they need a roll-off, or they want, you know, four or five roll-offs going into their neighborhoods. It's just, I, I want to get rid of this thing that I have, and I want to do it soon. So that's what we're looking at doing, so hopefully we don't push those people out for long periods of time.
One last, what do we, what is the cost of that, of the clean, green sweep? What do we pay in our utility bills? And is there any thought of expanding that? And if, if we did, double the cost to provide double the service?
Yeah, well, first of all, I think...
Is that something?
The numbers don't suggest, the, the numbers suggest we still have capacity within the current program.
Okay.
So, and, but we are looking at how to market that, and I think the title, I think we need to work on that so that people understand the availability. And if we, but what is the cost? What is the...
It's 84 cents a month, but that is split between the household hazardous waste fee and the clean sweep, green sweep.
So half of that. Eighty-four.
Yeah.
Forty. So we, but one of the things we think we can do a better job of is branding the, not every, you know, it's kind of, there's a core group that really knows about this program, and they're very good about calling and making sure they get scheduled as many times as they can, and that fills up. But there's still a lot, probably a lot of residents that are not familiar with it, and we still think we have capacity to grow the program. And if, when that demand grows, then maybe that's something we could talk to council about, is if we need to expand it, add more roll-off, add more crews, we'd certainly be glad to do that, because I think it's a great service, and it provides a way where you just have the containers out there for, how long are they out there for the...
They're usually out there for a three-day period.
Three-day period. And so it kind of allows neighbors to get rid of the big bulky stuff, but not necessarily... I've been in other communities where people just put it out at the curb and it sits there for a week...
Right.
...before it gets picked up. I think this is a much cleaner way to do it. So we'll keep monitoring this, but we think part of this is just getting the word out so that people know that it's available. And then as we become to the point where we're not able to meet those needs, then we may come to council and talk about growing it, expanding the capacity.
Do we, do we subsidize this at all, or is it return on investment? I mean, fully funded?
The theory is it's an enterprise, so it should be...
So the fee, we, we only have the number of halls, we only permit the number of halls that will be paid for with the fee. So we, we estimate that at the beginning of the year based on what our budgeted amounts are, and then we'll check throughout the, the year to see how we're doing. Because depending on, on tonnage and locations and those sorts of things, that can vary. Not every hall costs the same amount of money. So we'll, we monitor it throughout the year and then try and make sure that we've spent it all. But the last year, we had, you know, about $100,000 left over of the 600 from the program. But to let you know, the year before, it was only at, we, we spent all of the money. We had about $9,000 left at the end of it. But we did, as I said, we put some restrictions because staff was seeing that it was just becoming, you know, smaller amounts of houses. It wasn't a neighborhood cleanup program at that point, and so we were trying to make sure that when you do have somebody who comes in and wants to do a neighborhood cleanup, that they are making sure that their neighbors also are benefiting from the program and that it's not just one individual street.
Thanks. I know if I was Kevin's neighbor and he left stuff on the curb, I wouldn't want it out there for two weeks.
Right.
Well, so...
And thus, the need for proactive strategies, strategies for code enforcement. Yeah, I know, Eloy, if nobody knows, Eloy's going to be retiring before too long, so congratulations on that, Eloy. But before you go... But before you go, I would love to get more on the, get more from code compliance on the proactive strategies. Because, you know, we're seeing an increase, at least in my district, we're starting to see an increase in code calls. And I know I'm getting inundated with, through Nextdoor, with people that are, you know, starting to get angry at their neighbors. They're scared to file a complaint because they don't want to be singled out. But at the same time, you know, we have people in neighborhoods that are ready to take over their neighborhoods and get them back to, you know, what it was when they moved in. And when you have somebody like that, that's eager to make a difference in their community, I think we should give them all the support we can. So if there's any type of strategy or any way we can come up with some type of of a code enforcement policy where we can really help those people get in and help correct the problem before it gets too far out of balance, it'd be great.
Thank you for that input. I think the first thing that I want to kind of address is how I personally define proactivity. The way that we have defined proactivity is through something that is called a project within our department. So as the code officer is out in the field, they'll identify a geographic location within their area, assigned area, and they map that out. It could be 10 homes, it could be 40 homes. And they identify those homes as having multiple violations. And what they'll do is they will go out and engage with the community, knock on the doors, leave the inspection notices, and give a more gracious timeframe to address those violations. Some of the areas need more attention. Painting the house, replacing the roof is not a 14-day violation. It may take them a couple of months. And so we track that. It is a little archaic at this point. We are simply doing it by paper and creating a folder. And then after that timeframe is completed, we'll give the example of three months, the code officer will go back through there, make sure that progress has been made. If the neighbors or homes or residents, businesses are noncompliant, we resort back to our regular measures of saying, you have 14 days, or we issue a citation. So we're addressing proactivity from a project standpoint, not just driving down the street looking for an RV trailer that somebody's just going out for the weekend on.
Right. Well, and I know that we're, Chris and I have had this discussion. I know we're limited by state statute on what we can and can't do. But, you know, some of the timelines that we're up against, I mean, you know, you make a notification that there's an issue, and then you've got 30 days to fix it. And then you go back out, and if it's not fixed, you get another 14 days before you're fined. And then you send in the fine, as well as go out and write them the fine. So then that's another three or four days. And then you get another timeframe to go out and re-inspect. And, you know, one of the things I was looking at is, you know, our police department is able to tick it. And, you know, and our animal control is able to tick it. Why aren't our code enforcement officers able to tick it? And then the person that needs to comply is then, you know, we can have the ticket dismissed once they comply. But why can't we tick it on the front end, solve the problem? You know, get, really to be a little more, I guess, a little more aggressive on the front end so that our code enforcement players, our code enforcement officers aren't playing catch-up, you know, for six months, trying to get somebody to make a change in their property.
Yeah, so let me just quickly, and that's the challenge we have. I, right now, Eloy, I think the answer, part of, correct if wrong, but over 90%, we get 90% voluntary compliance on almost most calls, is that correct? So, put that in context. So by the time the code officer goes out in there and gives the notices, before we ever get to the point where we're issuing a citation, we get, more than 90% of the time, we get compliance now. We understand, it's that other percentage that creates the most problems in the neighborhoods. And so we can look at that as kind of, I think the challenge is, we wouldn't want to be citing those 90% that are voluntary complying now, because then I think council's phones will be off the hook, to be honest. So I think maybe it's kind of where we have those recurring problems, those individuals that are, that's becoming a problem. Or maybe it's the severity of the nature of the code we can evaluate and come back with some ideas on. But again, just, and I get it, and that can be very frustrating. It can just be one home that's a bad actor, and it can create a lot of angst in the neighborhood. But the reality, right now, we are, I think we're pretty proud of the fact that we're able to, through education, get 90% voluntary compliance on almost all the complaints that come in. But we can look at that and talk about some other options when it becomes something that's going to have a significant impact on the neighborhood and the quality of life in the neighborhood. We get that, that's maybe something we can look at. Okay.
I just want to touch briefly on the code compliance issue in general. And I think the past argument that I've heard is that we just simply don't have enough code enforcement officers to go after a lot of these cases. Is that correct?
I have nine full-time code officers. I have two temp code officers. So I have a total of 11 code officers to address our population within our city.
And you feel that's adequate, or you feel that that's not adequate?
I could use some more code officers.
So the, I guess, what I would propose is that, you know, as technology comes around, have we considered automating the process in which, like, if a citizen goes to file a code complaint, which I'm assuming is where the initial complaint comes from, could we not create some form of website or application where they can take a, simply take a picture, fill out an automated form, and then the entire process is automated? So perhaps that complaint gets approved internally by somebody on staff based on pictures, or it gets kicked back out, says, we need more pictures. And then that process just gets automated electronically, right? So 10 days later, it sends them an email, you know? Has the, can you take another picture of the property? Or has it been, is code complied with now at this point? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, can we use more citizen engagement to alleviate the need to ramp up on staff and make sure that we're not having to increase our cost at the same time? Sorry, that was a really long-winded-
No, I understand. I'm sorry. Correct. So one of the statements I was going to make is, our internal data is Dimes. So citizens can make a complaint through our Dimes database. The other option that they have, which they can remain anonymous, is using City Source, which is, again, a system where they can attach photos to their complaint, remain anonymous. And that's actually forwarded to me through the city manager's office. I take those, I enter those cases in, and send them out to the code officers with the photos attached. So that is one avenue that the citizens can use, and it is a form of communication that I get.
Mayor, Council, I think some of you are going to get briefed today about our new app that we have coming out. And I think under that app, there's the possibility, under a City Link, that you can do just what you're talking about.
Okay.
But it's, I guess I should be careful. It's a pilot program, it's not ready to roll out. It's just really, we want to try to have the council and a few others who are working on it, or work with it, and then we're going to be rolling it out. But it's, the app is ready to go now.
That was my question, if we could use, like, City Link?
Yeah, I think that's the plan.
Actually, for the employees as well. I don't know if that makes, we're doing by paper. Would it make sense to use, like, the application, like, City Link? Because then neighbors can see what other, what violations are doing? I think that's how it works. I, like, I have the app, and you can see the various different, like, graffiti's, graffiti pictures out in the neighborhood. And so I don't know if we can use that to be helpful as well.
You know, again, I'm not exactly sure. I haven't personally gone on and seen what feedback they get through City Link. So I'm not sure what response they're receiving. But I know the data and the information that I receive are the photos. Is, when I comment in the response box, I know that the residents are receiving that. If they've put their information in there, they're getting that response back.
And it's pretty quick, as far as resolution. What I see, like, graffiti is done, like, in the next two days, really quick. So, and then there's a picture of what happened. So it's pretty neat.
We'll see if we can integrate that in here.
But I heard you say we still have papers and we file folders for code complaints?
That's for our projects.
What does that mean? What's the difference?
Well, our projects are documentation for our proactivity. It's not for our general complaints. If you make a complaint, that's all automated.
Okay. Okay.
I think we do have a couple more questions. I know Mr. Freeman and I have a question about the Restaurant Innovation District for Jeff McGray, just to give you a heads up, Jeff. But before we get there, the comment was made that I did post on the mayor's Facebook page a little video about bulk pickup. And I, because I had the need at my house, I thought it might be a good idea just to help publicize it. And it provoked several positive comments, but also provoked some comments where people are saying, well, in Chandler, this is free, or in Gilbert, this is free. And so it caused me to ponder on that just a moment. And frankly, so I'd like, if you could just respond to that. To me, I think we're probably doing it the right way. Because I think we're, the Clean Sweep program is free, meaning nothing's free. But we ding you 84 cents-
We don't charge you per occurrence. Everybody pays for it regardless of whether they use it or not.
Right. When I get my bill, there's 84 cents on there for that service. And that makes sense to me, because if I, you know, I don't want, if I want that in my neighborhood, I don't want to trigger something, now all of a sudden, all my neighbors have to cough up 20 bucks because as a neighborhood, we've decided to do something. That seems not friendly. But on the bulk pickup, if I have a particular need, if I've got an old washing machine, or, you know, something broken that I, and I don't want, and it's frankly cheaper and easier for me to have you do it for $22 than me spend half of my Saturday waiting in line at the landfill and doing it myself. That's a great service, and I'll gladly pay $22 to have that happen. So I guess I just want to defend, I think the way that we're doing it is the way I, I think that's the best way. But some communities are choosing to charge for bulk-
Yeah, it's just, are they charging per that service specifically? Or is they're paying for it in their property tax, or in their general fund, or utility fund? Where, to your point, Mayor, our philosophy has been, a service like that, if not everyone across the city is going to be using that at any time of the year or whatever. So this way, the individual can make that choice to pay, decide they need the service, and they can be charged for the service, as opposed to spreading it across the majority of people who probably never use that service during the year. So we think it's actually better off for our community this way. And as you said, nobody's getting those services for free.
Right. And, yes, Mr. Luna.
I wanted to ask a question on the steam center in La Cendas Mountain. Who's going to be responsible for that? And there's obviously a huge cost associated with that. And so how is that going to roll out?
Well, that's why it's probably not mentioned as part of our response.
Okay.
What we're suggesting is, as opposed to we're concerned about the location and the facility, is what it was intended, what, there was the programs that we kind of, what we got interested in when it talked about the steam programming, the coding. And I think that's why we mentioned about the opportunity for the library, who is in the past, working with Kelly Smith, has run some of those coding classes. We're looking at expanding that throughout the entire system, branding it, so that it becomes widespread. I think Paulie mentioned maybe for different age groups also.
Right, across all age groups. Right now, it's focused on younger kids, probably eight to 12. So we want to offer adult classes as well.
And do we have capacity in our libraries to offer large classes for coding?
We have capacity for, well, actually, our library director-
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor Luna. I'm Heather Wolf, I'm the library director. And so, yes, we focused on the Code Academy piece of that whole large recommendation from the Citizen Committee. And it bruised our ego a little bit, that a lot of folks don't know that we've been offering code clubs since 2013. So five years, over 8,000 children have gone through our programs since we tallied it up in December of 2017. So we've had a lot of success with those. But we stepped back and we took a look at it, and we realized people don't know that we've been offering these great classes. And as the city manager mentioned, they started really because of a volunteer, Kelly Smith. And they've been cobbled together, honestly. There are a lot of, some are volunteer-run, some are staff-run. Our equipment is donated or grant-funded, it's aged. We don't have enough equipment. The children are doubling up on computers to participate in a class, so they're not getting as much time. So in the budget process, you will see, we do have a budget enhancement request to purchase the same equipment for our three largest locations, and more equipment, as well as a coding software program that will allow us to track both lessons for the participants. And so it'll, like, give a curriculum, and it'll allow us to track their progress. And it is also something that they can continue to work on at home, if they have access to a computer at home. So they're not always limited to what they do in the weekly class at the library. And then, as Paulie mentioned, we're looking at, currently, right now, we kind of do the tween age group. We're looking at expanding that and differentiating, because we have had younger children want to participate with older siblings. But their coding needs and the instruction that happens with that age group is different. So when we opened the Think Spot at the main library, one of the things we're looking at is what we're right now tentatively calling K-code. So for the preschool and kindergarten age group. And so we're just kind of taking a look at where there's a need in the community. There are organizations, HeatSync does some coding for adults. I'm not sure we'll go into that, but we may. We're actually having a meeting this afternoon to kind of figure out, when we say expand and enhance, what does that mean? But we definitely want to define and differentiate between age groups and start offering classes for specific age groups. As to capacity within the libraries, right now, at the main library, when Kelly started it, we had 15 kids in our training lab. We've now expanded it, and when we have code club, it also takes up the sewora room. So we'll grow the space based on what the demand is.
Thank you. And obviously, we need to market that as we move forward.
Right, yeah.
To concentrate on marketing that.
This is the same question, sorry.
No, please.
I would have is, when you say bruised our ego, that people weren't aware. I personally wasn't aware, and I'm in the technology space. So I guess my question would be, is what have we done since 2013 to promote the coding clubs in the library that people are even aware that they exist?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker. Like I said, we think we do a pretty good job of marketing. We do a lot on social media, we do our newsletters and sorts of things. But to your point, that reaches people who use the library already. So we've been working with the schools, we've done a number of things trying to get the word out. We attend their science fairs, those sorts of things. But, yeah, people just don't seem to be aware that we've been doing this for a long time. Although 8,000 kids going through, at least some kids are participating and are aware. So we just have to figure out how to, and I think part of it is the fact that we call it different things at the different locations. So if we have one name, one brand for code club, I think that will help generate that, what's the word, what? Awareness, the momentum.
Yeah, and I think coding is critical to the future of our city. So like, I wish you guys the best of luck with that. And, you know, I think it's definitely something that we need to make a stronger push of promoting. So thank you guys for taking that.
I would, so this is something that I'm very interested as well. As far as, there's a program that Phoenix did, it's Code Phoenix, that linked schools and linked their Parks and Recs department, and kind of has been building out through the last couple of years. I would like to see if we could seek those strategic partners. They partner with national organizations as well, I think code.org and others. And maybe branding one program, like what Phoenix did, and other entities across the country into promoting this into young schoolchildren across Mesa. So I would be interested in looking into that piece.
To tag on with my colleague here, I think that working with the Mesa Public Schools, as well as Gilbert Public- as well as Gilbert Public Schools in Queen Creek, I think that's something that we need to do. Have any of you seen Kids Code? It's amazing. And it's just amazing how these kids, it's just really intuitive for them. And so, as my colleague Whitaker said, this is the future, and we need to continue to promote this kind of activity. So I appreciate the work you're doing, but we really do need to market it and let people know it does exist, and create those essential partnerships as we move forward.
Right. And Mayor, Council, Heather's already been working on that, at branding it, the curriculum. And then at some point, too, it works well for us to do it in the libraries, because we do have some space there. But eventually, we're going to probably have to look, if we're going to really take this in a significant way, looking for additional space. And so one of the thoughts we had is possibly looking at the old ITD building as an opportunity. We need to rent, we need to go into that building, and ITD is moving out of there. But that has some space that we may want to look at in the future, where we could have much larger space to work and have code classes. And again, this is, fits very well in with what we're going to brand and take the advantage of considering all of this as part of our Innovation District offerings, too.
I guess my two cents is, Heather, I think you noted that the work that's been done to this point on this issue comes in large part due to a great volunteer, Kelly Smith, who's done, as a volunteer, a lot of this himself. We need to give him a big pat on the back, but I think he's kind of moved on. And so for us to pick this up now, we're going to have to rely not on volunteers anymore, or at least to the extent we have. And it sounds like I know you're working on it.
She's going to have to pick this up. We get it. We know that. And she's working on staffing that up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council?
What happened to Kelly?
Kelly is a wonderful guy, MIT graduate, that just out of the goodness of his heart was doing this program. But he's very busy in other professional endeavors right now.
Well, he's over in our.
He's in.
Launchpoint.
Launchpoint.
Working on his own projects. I think that.
He's trying to revolve, he's trying to put all the public schools out of business by coming up with a new and innovative way to educate kids.
Is he still open to sitting like, on an advisory board or something that I've done?
I bet he would be, yeah.
Yeah. He's, he, while he's no longer, he stepped down in December, and he's no longer running the code club at the main library. We were doing the code clubs at Dobson and Red Mountain with staff. He's, he actually has said he'd be willing to let us keep the computers that he helped, he did a GoFundMe, a crowdsourcing fundraiser to get the equipment. And he's, he's been very generous, and he is, we all know his number. And one of the things that he created as part of this is this coding software that we would like to continue to use. So we will be supporting his efforts as an entrepreneur.
Mr. Freeman, do you want to, do you want to hear more about the Restaurant Innovation District?
I did.
Well, let's invite Jeff McVey up. That was one of the things that was just mentioned in the presentation a moment ago. Jeff, one of the things, and I think we need to find a new name for this. I know under Imagine Mesa, this is the phrase that was coined by the folks who were proposing the idea. But when Brookings was here a couple of weeks ago, they cautioned against us getting too carried away with the use of the term Innovation District, just because it kind of waters down what a real Innovation District is. So with that critique, tell us a little bit about the downtown, the initiative to support new restaurants downtown.
Sure. Mayor, Council, good morning. Jeff McVey, Manager of Downtown Transformation. I'm going to go back one step. While I can't read the mind of the person that put that idea in there, what we have seen when it comes to, I guess, restaurant innovation in other cities, is somebody will go and they'll, they'll build a space. And it's more like a restaurant incubator space, someplace that's small, inexpensive, and it allows somebody to test a concept and see whether it'll work. If it does work, then you work on trying to find them a permanent, larger space within your, within your city. I've heard a lot of people talk about restaurant incubator spaces. So in my mind, I kind of think that that might be where they were going. But as it relates to our downtown and our efforts, the need for restaurants and good quality restaurants is really there. And as that feeds into the Innovation District that we're trying to create, we need to have that place, that environment, to attract the top-tier businesses and the top-tier employees for those businesses. So our efforts to try and attract restaurants are very important. So we have a few programs out there. Last year, maybe it was 2016, I think it was last year. But the council did approve a Small Business Startup Utility Rate. That provides a 25% reduction in electric and water bills for the first three years of operation, which is very important for small businesses and restaurants, as they're starting to take hold. That's their toughest times. Most restaurants are going to fail in the first six months to a year, if they are going to fail. So if we can help them with that front-end cost, that's a big deal. We also have our facade improvement program, which we can use to really help bring out the street presence of the buildings that we have there. As you know, many buildings in downtown have turned over into new ownership recently. That, most of those new ownership groups are actively working to bring in restaurants. And to the extent that we can help that by using the facade improvement program to dress up the buildings, to help them dress up the buildings and be more attractive to restaurants, those are the efforts that we're working on. We're also, from a staffing perspective, we're also just there to be essentially an ombudsman to any developer, any restaurateur that wants to come into our downtown, so that we can make that process as seamless and straightforward for them as possible.
Thank you. Well, let's go with Mr. Freeman and Jeremy. Are you good?
I was just.
Okay. I'm sorry. Jeremy and then Frankie.
So my question, have we considered starting the restaurant incubator space as our own recreational area that we could help try to spur restaurants into the city, like the old, the old federal building I know had been thrown out there as one of the options for that? Is that something that we've considered doing internally, whether it's just providing space and then finding somebody to partner with to actually run the programming aspect of it? There's the, there's already a restaurant incubator where, off of Main Street, where they, they're bringing like, four businesses online. The new build, I can't think of the name of it right now, but have we considered a partnership from a programming aspect just to provide space?
Let me respond to that real quickly. If we did a restaurant incubator in the federal building, it would be wildly successful. The federal building is the coolest building in our downtown. The problem is that the strings that are attached to us getting the keys to that building from the federal government are very restrictive in terms of what we can use for. It has to be used for quote-unquote recreational purposes. So anything commercial is a non-starter in that building. I have had a couple of great meetings in the past week or two with, you know, as has been mentioned, there's been a lot of turnover in the ownership of some of these large, very cool buildings in downtown. The old Newberry Building, for example, huge basement, huge cafe, you know, lunch counter, ultra-cool place. And if the city owned a bunch of those buildings, yeah, we could go do this. But the good news is, the private owners of these buildings, this is one of the concepts they're going to pursue, is multiple restaurant concepts inside some of these buildings. So my impression, having talked with the private developers, is that this restaurant incubators are on the near horizon in our downtown.
And then we'll try to help support them with some of these, what, the incentives, the utilities, and other things that we can help them out with.
Yeah, I think specifically, it's just the federal building that I think is one of our most.
Yeah. But as the mayor said, we're constrained by the restrictions on the use.
Frankie?
My question, I know we focus on downtown, but are we looking at other strategic points in the city to, I know there's other, like, district-based points in the city. Is that, I know in West Mesa, there's a big Asian influence on Dobson, between Main Street and Broadway, and of course, the Fiesta. But are we looking at other types of areas where we can be helpful, or is that a part of the discussion?
Well, so, I mean, always, when it's a business, we're willing to work with them. I think one of the things we have to be careful, kind of when an area kind of starts taking off and has existing businesses there, that's our sensitivity, is that we're not creating an advantage for the competition to come into that area. So that's why downtown has kind of been able to work with, just because it's more of a, almost, there's a neat, we have some good restaurants, let's be clear. We love the restaurants that are here. We appreciate their commitment to being in downtown. But we do believe it could support more. And I think that's, we just made it a priority. But certainly, with small businesses around the city, we'll try to support a bit. Right now, the focus has been kind of in the downtown area.
Thank you. It might be good to push on.
I think, yeah. Why don't you finish up, Polly, your part, and then let's have RJ do his presentation.
So I know I'm going through these fairly quickly and to lack time for questions. The committee did bring forward the recommendations in those four major areas, but they did want to highlight existing projects that the city is already working on, or that's in progress and in development. I won't go through each of these individually, but if you do have questions, we can follow up on any of those items. And then finally, they wanted to highlight honorable mentions. These were ideas that were submitted that gained a lot of attention or were popular, and they felt that it was important to make sure that they were on our radar as well. And the first is a little free library idea, and Community Services is putting together a proposal to roll out a program that would implement a pilot program of the little free libraries in neighborhoods. The second is the entry and monument signs into Mesa to identify high-volume areas, and RJ will speak to that in more detail. And then the third idea is the downtown chiller system. Our current capacity is reserved for municipal purposes, but Frank McVey, our Energy Resources Director, can speak to that in more detail if you'd like. The landing at Lee High Falls was another idea that was popular, and discussions are underway for different opportunities for that project. And then finally, there was a grouping of several ideas that fell into a general area, food forest, community garden, nursery, and community education center. And right now, staff do have a farm-to-table restaurant concept in development that addresses all of those components. So we just want to make sure that we are kind of going in the right direction and answer any further questions you might have. But before that, I'll turn it over to RJ, so he can speak more to the monument signs.
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. Thank you. The item that came through Imagine Mesa, you know, was to, you know, look at, you know, entry or monument signs. Those can be.
Okay.
Small or big. I mean, so the scale is, you know, kind of all over the place in terms of trying to estimate cost. As you know, we've done some branding, you know, in certain areas, you know, of the city as part of, you know, projects. We've got the Fiesta District, Falcon District, the staff are continuing to work to brand that area, Power Road, you know, there's areas like that. But one of the things I reflected on when I saw this item was when I moved to the Valley 10 years ago, you know, some cities have on their street signs, a logo or something that helps you know, you know, where you're at. As you know, Mesa's street sign color is standard. It's white on green. But other than those branded areas, there's nothing that really jumps out at and says, hey, you know, we're in Mesa. So this evolved with a conversation with Mr. Brady. But what we've, are looking at is at entryway points into the city, reinstalling illuminated street signs with the Mesa logo. And that will allow folks, if they're coming into the city or exiting the city, you know, to know, you know, where Mesa is. We estimate that's about $30,000 per intersection to install those. We have a budget request that we'll be discussing with Ms. Kent and Mr. Brady as we go on. But our initial thought is that we could support doing about five intersections per year, just continuing to roll through the city. And we think that will help folks know, hey, I'm here in Mesa. In addition to that, we have just our standard arterial intersection street signs. And really, at no additional cost, as we're replacing those signs, we've proposed to add the Mesa logo, you know, to those signs as well. So over a period of time, you know, we'll have all of the arterial intersections marked, but giving more prominence to the entryways into the city. So it was a great suggestion. We've tweaked it a little bit, you know, rather than the monument signs, because that could require acquiring property or right-of-way. And again, depending on the scale, you know, of those projects, you could spend quite a bit of money. So we think we're achieving, or have the opportunity to achieve that goal. And we're excited to move forward with that concept.
I think that's, it seems like, I had an experience 20 years ago when I was on our city council. I remember seeing this beautiful monument sign in Apache Junction. I thought, wow, why can't we have something as cool as Apache Junction? So I came back to a city council meeting, and we started.
How many times have you said that?
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, the irony of being envious of Apache, I'm not going to say that out loud. I'm not going to go there. But what came from that is frankly, you don't have to spend a lot of money to do this. If we just, I think we've got a great city logo. We've got a great city brand. If we just start incorporating it into the signing that we're already doing.
Right.
I love the branding we're doing with the Falcon, and Fiesta, and Gateway, and we're doing this already. So I think the idea of maybe doing it on a citywide basis, so that people do feel welcome, and they do realize, oh, I'm now in Mesa, that's great. But we don't have to spend a ton of money on it. We can just incorporate it into our existing signage as we.
Yeah, and we'll look at it, too, as we decide to roll it out. It maybe as we, like RJ was saying, as we replace signs, so while there's a dollar amount, we would otherwise probably spend some of it. These are illuminated signs, so it does increase the cost. But they're the signs we've done in the downtown area. You'll notice those. We think those really stand out, both during the day and especially at night. And having those at just some strategic locations where people, you know, you have a lot of the people coming in and out of the city, we think that would make sense. Yeah. So we would, that's what we, our response to that idea, that's what we came up with.
I think it's a great response. Any other comments, Council? Any, anything else to your presentation?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I think you're going to hear, well, the next presentation, you're going to hear where we've identified projects, capital improvement projects from Imagine Mesa, that we're going to carry forward, at least to consider under our future CIP. But you're also going to continue to hear follow-up from many of these ideas as we go into this upcoming budget discussion. We'll bring some of these forward for you to continue to have some further discussion about how we could continue with those and the resources that may be needed.
Thank you. Thank you for following up on this idea so well. I think you saw that I bragged very boldly about how successful Imagine Mesa was at the state of the city. And that was a very sincere bragging. I think we're all very pleased with how well we were able to interact. And what was the number, 67,000 responses, I think, initially? And then, so just, I think it exceeded certainly my expectations in terms of how successful we were in interacting with people. So thank you very much. We do have one request to speak from the public on this item. And so, thank you very much. We'll excuse the staff. Steve Hessler is asked to speak. Mr. Hessler, welcome. Thank you for your patience. Do you have three minutes to speak?
Time myself.
Okay. We'll let you know in a friendly way if you go over.
Steve Hessler, 1436 West Jerome Mesa. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I listened to the State of the City address the other day. I saw three interrelated items. One was the, pointed out the need for downtown university research facility. Another thing pointed out the need for public safety. And then there's a reference to ballot issues coming up, which I assume would tie into these things. I know when I looked at the Imagination, Imagine Mesa questionnaire, or the results earlier before it's taken down, the number one item was at downtown campus. What I found bothersome was, is we can do this without raising taxes. I hope this is true, as it is with all the Imagine Mesa projects. But for it to be true, I want to make sure we're not raising taxes in other areas to replenish funds that are being diverted into these projects. I hope we're not going to be raising utility rates to put into the general fund, to divert in these projects. Or I hope we won't be increasing debt levels, or kicking the can of liabilities down the road, which we all know are substantial. I know this money is fungible and moves all over the place. And without commenting on the worthwhile of these projects, I mean, a lot of exciting worthwhile projects, but I just hope we have the transparency to know how we're going to pay for these things. I think when the 2016 tax initiative was defeated, it was in part of this transparency, or a lack of perception of transparency, people not knowing what's going on. So when we move forward with this, I really hope we have this transparency about exactly how we're going to pay for these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hessler.
Less than three minutes.
Okay, yeah, very well. And I promise you, I'm sure you'll be a part of this all the way through. We will be absolutely transparent and look forward to hearing your critique as we do that. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 1C. That is to hear a presentation and provide direction on a preliminary list of capital improvement program projects related to parks and recreation, cultural, public safety, and transportation that will be considered during the upcoming CIP process.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just have a quick comment. Although I appreciate all the work that staff has done to put.
Although I appreciate all the work that staff has done to put this preliminary list together, I do think it's premature, given that we haven't had a strategic council planning meeting yet. And we even, during my time on council, we've always had a meeting before we've had any type of CIP process discussion. We even have a colleague, Councilmember Heredia, who hasn't yet participated in one, and had the opportunity to give his feedback and input. And we're going to be having one theoretically, hopefully, in the next three weeks. I think that it might be a good idea to wait even on this presentation until all of council has had that opportunity to give their feedback, but I'm willing to entertain what my colleagues feel about.
Thank you.
I agree. Well, mayor, so...
Yeah, I think Mr. Brady had the response to this.
So, this was not intended to make any decisions today. The whole purpose of this presentation was to transmit to you the list of proposed, a preliminary draft of projects, both for only, for parks, recreation, public safety, and transportation, that may be considered for a future bond package. And it was intended to give it to you to say, here's what's on our list, and for council to look at it, and then give us feedback and say, did we miss anything? Is there something else you would like to add to this list? So this was not anything more than to say, here's what we have, we've tried to be very comprehensive. If there's more that needs to be added to this list, please let us know, so that we can begin to, we can add it to this list. You notice this list has no dollars on it, because we haven't, there's a lot of projects here, and the time that we're going to need in order to vet through these projects and give cost estimates, there's no way we're going to be able to do all of these in the time for council to make decisions regarding a future bond package. We will have to make a final decision sometime in July about what packages, or even if we're going to do a bond election going forward. We just, after having gone through the Imagine Mesa recommendations from the committee, many of those are on this list. We wanted to be at least be able to suggest that we've heard and identified those that are now on the list. Council members over the last months have suggested different projects they would like to be considered, but just to make sure everybody kind of had the same opportunity, all this was intended to do, was just, we sent it to you a week early, look at it again, in a couple of weeks, we'd like you to continue to give us feedback. We can wait until after we meet in March, but I would tell you that the difficulty we're having, or going to have, is the time that we need as staff to take any of these projects and begin working on cost estimates, so that we have an idea of when the council has to make, is going to have to make a decision at some point, which of these projects, well, first of all, what is the dollar amount that we're willing to ask for as our future bonds, and then decide which one of these projects will make that cut or not. It's going to take us some time to begin the process. Some of these projects are, we've been able, because they've been around for some time, have been able to identify some estimates, but there's a lot of these we have not. We haven't gone to engage designers or engineers to come up with some estimates that we would feel comfortable sharing with council to make decisions in the future. So, if we don't have the time to get the estimates, it's going to be very difficult for us to add those projects for a bond package. That's why we wanted to start the process today. No decisions are being made today, it's really to say, council, here's what staff's list looks like. If there's others that you want to add to it, please let us know in the next couple of weeks, so that we can include those on this list. If there's projects on here that you're not familiar with, that you have some questions about, please feel free to contact us about it. That's all this was.
No, and I greatly appreciate that, Mr. Brady. I just feel that our priorities will be left behind. As a council, we set the direction of the city, and I feel after we have the strategic planning meeting, we'll be able to focus in and hone in on those projects that best fit under our priorities, rather than just a catch-all list that has every single want from city staff. This should be more of a council-driven project than a staff-driven one.
Hey, mayor?
Yes?
Just to clarify, the election has to be called by July 2nd, that's the deadline.
Okay, so July 2nd is the date that we have to have bond elections, what those are going to be?
And council will recognize there are many projects on here that were directed by city council members.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, and I sort of agree with Chris on, my colleague Chris Glover on this. I think what I would like to see is a list of proposed projects across the spectrum, you know, for my district, let me go through, based off of what I'm hearing from the community, from the residents in my district, and kind of, you know, allow me to meet with my district, with my constituents, and hear from them what they're wanting, and then, you know, check those boxes off, and then I can come back to staff and say, you know, in our strategic plan, and say, this is what's important to those folks in my district.
Okay. Mr. Luna?
I appreciate staff for putting this list together, but it's quite comprehensive, it's going to generate a lot of questions, and I just feel that we need to have some kind of facilitated discussion on these, and allow feedback.
Sure, and that's fine, that's all it is intended, and it can be the topic of the discussion that we have in March. But I want to, council, I didn't think you would appreciate if I dumped this on to you the week before that conversation, so this is just a way, if there's other projects you want us to put on here, we'll be glad to do that, so that everybody can see, and maybe that's the way to do it, is if council members have projects you want to submit to us before the end of this month, so that we have those in time for March, then share those with us, so that we can include them on this list.
I would love to see a strategic planning where we're whiteboarding different priorities of council, and to Chris's point that Francisco hasn't even had the opportunity to bring some of his priorities, I think is a legitimate one, with the fact that we have a new council member. But I think that some of our ideas and our concepts need to come from council, and we need to vet through these, whether it's at a strategic planning event, or whatever that may be, I think that that's the proper step to go through, rather than bringing the ideas to us to discuss today.
Okay. And I view this as a great precursor to our strategic planning meeting. I think to Mr. Hessler's point, this is going to be somewhat controversial, and we're going to need to be extremely transparent throughout all this, and we need to say, here's a list of ideas that have been proposed through Imagine Mesa, and from staff, and from council, let's get them all out there. And at some point, we're going to have to go through the difficult process of prioritizing and saying, well, that's a good project, but it's not going to make the cut. And we're going to have a very robust conversation about that at our strategic planning meeting, and probably several meetings after that, before we get to, you know, complying with the deadlines that we have to if we were to call an election. So, I think the more due diligence we do towards getting us prepared to make those quantitative, you know, qualitative decisions are going to be important. So, I looked through this list, and it was helpful to me, because I was saying, oh, yeah, these, boy, that's a lot of ideas, there's no way we can do all of that. Now, I'm sure there's ideas that aren't on this list, that need to come from council, and need to come from our constituents, but I think the sooner we put this list together, the better, I mean, and it's going to grow. And like Mr. Brady was saying, frankly, getting, putting, doing the cost estimates for this is a very difficult process. We've had bad experiences in the past where we've put stuff on a bond election, and then it's passed, and then we realize, oh my gosh, we grossly underestimated what this cost. So I mean, we need to work really hard to make sure we have good cost estimates attached to whatever it is we do to decide to put on the ballot. So, the more work, the more meetings, the more staff direction that we can provide, the better. So I'm not offended at the idea of looking at this list, but I like, like I say, that we're not going to pass any judgment on these, and we're not going to say, you know what, don't even bother to look into that, because I don't think I like it. On the other hand, maybe if council is all ready to say, you know, some of these ideas we know aren't going to make the cut, so, Mr. Brady, please don't spend a lot of staff time...
There you go.
...researching what it's going to cost to do this, because we know it's just never, it's a non-starter. I don't know, we can, there's no wrong way to do this, and we absolutely do need to have a strategic planning meeting, but I don't know that beginning, you know, kind of setting the table for that now is a bad thing. But if, but I defer to council if...
It's just a list, to do what you want with it, or not, we don't need to have any other further discussion about it.
Mr. Brady, I think all of my colleagues are very grateful for the list. I think that maybe this is an opportunity for, to help us prepare for our own districts for the strategic planning meeting. We can go through and highlight projects, and then add ones that we want to beforehand.
That'd be great.
But I don't think today we need to go through it.
Oh, no, no, we weren't, no, no, we weren't planning on doing that, I apologize.
The presentation that looks like you have for...
No, 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 I'm sorry, sorry, yeah.
Just for answers.
Ignore this part of it, this is just, here it is. That's all this has been, here it is.
If you had questions?
Yeah, it was just if you had questions, but for us, it was just, here's the list, and let us know if you want to add more to it, and maybe, you're not ready to do that today, I get it, so maybe that's the first ask, is here's this list, if there's something in addition to this, whatever format you want to get, I know in the past, we've just asked council before the strategic planning process, and, which will probably happen the first of March, just go ahead and begin developing that list, you can send it to me, and then we'll share it with the rest of the council, and we could go about it that way, if that works.
Yes, so Frankie?
Yeah, a question, I know this is Parks and Rec, Public Safety and Transportation, is there other lists of other departments that we can, been pulled together like this?
No, well, really, again, this list was intended for defining those projects that would be eligible for a future bond program. And it does, so it doesn't include, so typically for the city, that's, there's a, there's a specific description of those, what it doesn't include are the enterprise funds, the utilities. And the idea that, the thinking was that they would be, that would be a list, or that would be an initiative that would take place in two years, in 2020. I will tell you, one of the things that is going to be a challenge is putting Parks, Recreation, Public Safety, and Transportation on the same ballot. That's going to be a pretty stiff number, so, one of the first questions we have to have as a council, the group, and, you know, how much are we going to, you know, what do we, we kind of, kind of create a total amount, and maybe there's some thought, because transportation is very much tied to the utilities, because everything, if transportation's outbuilding roads, and those water and gas guys have to come in right behind them, and sometimes that can create a lot of challenges for them. So, we'll have that conversation, but we wanted to at least start with the whole universe of things. Really, if the council doesn't have any questions or concerns right now, we don't have to have any more discussion other than, here it is, let me know if you've got questions, and then if you have specific projects in these categories, and if it's outside these categories, council ready, let me know, and we can tell you whether it's eligible or not, and then we would bring that forward again to the council strategic, or we'd have it, given it to you ahead of the council strategic initiatives, and we could have that discussion.
Okay, so that prompts a question. I think to the, some of the good points that we've made here, we need to begin with a strategic plan, and then from that strategic priorities, we can, that will help us decide what we want to propose to the community in terms of our bond election. But, we have the practical problem of saying, well, if we wait until the second week of March or so, to say, okay, Mr. Brady, here's our strategic goals, and consistent with those strategic goals, we'd like you to give us cost estimates for these proposed projects, does that give you adequate time to do the due diligence of the staff?
Not weeks, not weeks, yeah. But, I think how we can do this is, and to suggest that there's not any cost estimates to these projects is not fair, I just didn't want to kind of prejudice the conversation right now, this is more just a list. We do have some cost estimates, but I think that will help us as we go through that strategic discussion. I think from that, we'll be able to clear, I think that'll kind of give us some guidance about, well, these are the kind of projects that are nice, but probably not maybe this go-around. So we'll prepare, we'll just keep moving this forward, take what the council submits. Reminder, remind the council that back in March, and during the budget process, you did come up with strategic initiatives. We sent that out to you last week, last Thursday, I believe, that has a report of all those strategic initiatives, it has a dashboard of performance measures, and an update on where we stand with those strategic initiatives, what we've, what you've been working on, what we've accomplished, at least through last week. And so, we would, we'll update that again, and submit that to you again in a couple of weeks before we reconvene the strategic planning process.
Okay. So are there, so for the big projects that you know you're going to have to spend a lot of time on to give us an intelligent answer on as to what, what this costs if we put it on? You think you're...
I think it's mostly, for right now, let's just move forward with this, I think we can get to the strategic planning process, and that will help us kind of see quickly which ones we want to move forward with, and others that are not necessarily there. There's a lot of, there's a long list of smaller projects, and that will probably be the most helpful for us to kind of get some guidance about what, how many of those we're really going to pursue or not.
Sure. And I'm grateful for this, because there were things on here that frankly, I hadn't seen before, and so it was useful for me to see that, so, I guess, between now and when we do our strategic planning, if the council has other ideas that aren't on this list that you want to make Mr. Brady aware of, so we can begin that discussion, that would be great, I imagine. All right, any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item number two, information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding any of those items that were on your agenda? Seeing none, the next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Okay, yes, Mr. Luna?
For members of the community in District 5, if you're interested, and I think there's a graphic, hopefully, our TV people will call up the graphic. Well, anyway, it's...
There it is.
Oh, okay. Heart Your Health at the Multi-Generation Center, located 7550 East Adobe Street, from 8:00 to noon on this Saturday. It's going to be a lot of activity, it's going to be pickleball tournament, and it's open to the public, so if you'd like to play pickleball, please come on over, it's going to be a lot of fun. But there will be a lot of traffic there, so I just want to warn everybody, because we do have...
Go ahead and announce it. Household hazardous waste.
We have household hazardous waste, and it's on the same street, so get there early. We're a wonderful free breakfast, and opportunity to do some great exercise at the Multi-Generation Center, if you care to, so, I want to invite everyone in District 5, or anyone in the community to attend.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Will there be a one-on-one basketball tournament this year?
Absolutely. And you know I want to win you.
Wow, okay, I'm coming now. Any other announcements? Mr. Brady, can you help us with our schedule?
Vice mayor took care of two of mine, so the only other one I have is that the study session will be February 15th at 7:30. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the item on the agenda? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we will convene an executive session.